Call to order, the Gurnee Village Board Committee of the Whole of October 30th, 2023. Roll call, please.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Woodside.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Garner. O'Brien.
Present.
Thomas.
Present.
By present.
Y'all stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
The United States of America. It stands, one, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome tonight. Tonight we have, we're focusing on water. How about that? I guess this is a starter, I have to say that as much as things happen in the village that we take for granted, I'd have to say at near or the top of the list is that when we turn on our faucet, that water comes out of it that you could drink. So, and when that were to not happen, I can guarantee you that would be the largest problem that we have in the village immediately. So, to me, having our attention to it and having the village do the due diligence it does and making sure that our underground is solid through public works and that our up in the air is solid, as we've invested money in that, and that we work closely with Jawa through Bill to make sure that the water is drinkable, that it's a super important item and it's not something we think of very much, and that's why I would like, I wanted to put some attention on it today. And it provides some level of comfort to know that we've paid attention to it because we've also paid attention to some ways in which we can provide alternate sources of water in the event that our main source goes down. And Brett will probably talk about that with reference to some other sources we have in the event that Jawa isn't available to us for a period of time. So, saying all that, we have a presentation today by Bill Succi with Executive Director of Central, Succi, sorry, Director of Central Lake County Joint Water Action, Water Agency, CLC-Jawa Update. So, Bill, we really appreciate you coming out on a Monday evening. So, Pat, did you have anything to?
I got nothing, no. We got some delicious Jawa water.
All right.
Bill, I put on for everybody tonight, so.
That's good.
Yeah, Bill's gonna run through Jawa. He's got a presentation, just run through some highlights of the agency. Any questions along the way, feel free to ask. And then, as the mayor said, Brett's gonna talk about Gurnee system specifically, so take it away, Bill.
All right. My name's Bill Succi, I'm the Executive Director at the Central Lake County Water Agency. I grew up in Greenwood Park, actually. I met my wife at Marriott's Great America, 1984, when it cost 25 cents to get in if you're a Gurnee resident. And I used to enjoy the Avalon and even the Rustic Manor. But today, I'd like to talk about water. And, you know, to me, water's not only the lifeblood of the community, it literally and figuratively binds us all together because there is a pipe from your own homes that is connected all the way out into Lake Michigan, one way or the other. So, it's one thing that pulls us all together. Tonight, I'd like to go over the history, kind of our organization. I talk about Lake Michigan. I'm sorry, I am a chemist and I like science, so you're gonna get a little bit of it. Talk about our facilities, our process, go through membership expansion, which has been really important for us. And also, I have to brag a little bit, it's your water plant, so I'm bragging about your water plant and answer any questions you might have. Feel free to interrupt me during it. So, first, just a little bit about our history. Back in December 3rd, 1981, Mayor Welton drove out to Libertyville Village Hall to have a meeting with 55 other people representing 14 communities. And the meeting was called by Mayor Paul Neal, who was the mayor at Libertyville at the time, and he wanted to look at bringing water into the community, his community, and into Lake County. So, all these folks got together and over the next five years, they looked at ways that they could bring water and join together to do this because, you know, obviously what you do together is much more powerful than what you could do independently. And in 1986, they formed a Joint Action Water Agency, and this is allowed by the state legislature, who at the time had just passed a new legislation allowing communities to form joint action agencies. So, they use this mechanism to form CLC-Jawa, and they then brought in, they had invited everyone in the county to join, and in the end, there was nine communities that wanted to join. So, Gurnee was one of those charter communities. And together, they then spent the next five years figuring out exactly how they were gonna get water out to the communities. And they looked at every single option, buying water from Waukegan, North Chicago, they contacted the Department of Navy and asked if they could take over the naval water plant and expand it. That was a big no. They contacted Highland Park, and in the end, they really wanted to control their own water destiny. They didn't want to buy water under contract from someone. And Mayor Neal had said, Highland Park made an offer, and he said, "Well, I don't understand this deal, so we need to build a pipe to Highland Park, give them the pipe, and then we're under contract," and it didn't make sense to him. So, in the end, they built their own facilities. These are the largest facilities built on the lake at the time in quite some time. I shouldn't say they're the largest, but they were the largest built in quite some time and the first new water plant on Lake Michigan in 40 years at that time. The purpose of the water plant, and this is in 1987, this is five years before we went online, it's in the press release that they had, it's still true today, and the purpose for which the members formed as a water agency is to establish a long-term solution to providing water that will ensure the continued well-being and quality of life for existing residents and future generations. At the time, this was a very expensive venture. There was a lot of politics, we have a lot of newspaper clippings, a minority of the population thought this was a boondoggle, but it, the referendum passed to fund it using general obligation bonds. And it was very successful then and very successful now. In fact, if one way we can measure success is by the water rates, the water rate that we charge the Village of Gurnee today is much less than we charged in 1992 when we first opened our door. And in fact, it's about half of what Highland Park wanted to charge us in 1980s. I'd say that's pretty successful. So, a little bit about our organization. We are a Joint Action Water Agency. We're a public agency and corporate. We have a Board of Directors. The mayor sits on our Board of Directors, and I work for the Board of Directors under contract. We meet routinely in Lake Bluff, and we present our, you know, various items for approval and have public meetings, present the budget, and the board directs us. Even though we are independent, we're not necessarily part, we're a separate entity from the village, because the village and the other members that we serve all serve on our board, we're basically whatever the board wants us to be, you know, the board is, directs us. We do have also an executive committee, and Pat Mute sits on the executive committee. He's one of our longest-serving members on that committee and is our best absolute best member.
You got it. I told him to say that.
But the executive committee is very valuable for staff because when we have ideas and we're doing contracting projects, we're dealing with the public administrators from 13 communities. And when you get 13 public administrators in a room, that's a, there's a lot of collective knowledge there that we get to tap into, and I think it's just hugely advantageous to the agency. Yeah, so that's basically how we're organized and operate in terms of our, our staff. We have 26 employees, and you can see in this chart, there's the Board of Directors, I report to the board, and then there's a Director of Operations that reports to me. We do outsource quite a bit of our functions, we outsource all excavations, we don't have any iron for doing excavation or anything like that. We outsource our accounting services, obviously legal and GIS and things like that. The Director of Operations, then we have a Maintenance Department, which is about seven people. We have operators, there's 10 operators. They work 24 hours and they work 12-hour shifts. We have three people that work in the field, three people. Three people cover 100 square miles and 55 miles of pipeline. The rest, we outsource. We have Technology Supervisor, and then there's the three people on Admin. That gives you a little bit of idea of how our structure is. I think it's pretty lean, but we get the job done, and we're all extremely proud. And we really do feel honored, myself and the team, to get to operate a plant like this, it is state-of-the-art, world-class facility. In terms of our members, so who's a member of the agency? We have members from all over Central Lake County. The County of Lake is our largest member, and the County of Lake includes Nowood Roundout. They operate several smaller systems. So, you have Grandwood Park, Fox Lake Hills, Nowood Roundout, Wildwood, and the largest, Vernon Hills. So, it might seem strange that Vernon Hills doesn't have their own, you know, water, water system, but the County of Lake operates their system. The second largest is the Village of Gurnee, so thank you for using so much water, we appreciate that. And then we have our other members on the line, Libertyville, all the round Lake area, Grayslake, Lindenhurst, Lake Villa, Round Lake Volo, and our host community, Lake Bluff. So, we pump an average of around 20 million gallons of water a day, and in the summer, we'll pump a peak of around 36 million gallons a day. The population we serve is around 260,000 to 80,000. That makes us in the top 10% largest water treatment systems in the United States. Just to give you one financial slide, I have expenses of about 22 million a year, and this shows that they're roughly in thirds, a third going to debt, a third going to O&M, and a third going to our fixed asset replacements, which I'll talk a little bit about later. Are there any questions up to this point?
None yet, Bill.
Okay. So, we're gonna talk about our Great Lake. I think it's something that it's hard to appreciate, it's interesting, Mayor, you started with appreciating our water and our water system, and part of that, I think, is appreciating the fact that, I mean, just think about this for a minute, just really think about it. This earth is a very, very large place. 20% of the world's fresh water, 20% of the earth's available surface fresh water is right here in the Great Lakes. Lake Michigan's the fifth largest of the Great Lakes, has 1.2 quadrillion gallons of water. I mean, it is really, we're very, very fortunate, and it makes our area, the country, really drives our economy, having this blue freshwater coast. In this picture, you can see, I don't know, if you see a little dot up in the corner there, it's, might be a little hard to see, yeah, there's a, there's a boat up in the, close to the horizon, that boat's actually sitting over our intake, gives you an idea how far out the intake is. So, the Great Lakes with 20% of the world's fresh water are really pretty incredible. We're lucky to have that much water. And just a little primer, I guess, on watersheds, because it's very pertinent to where we live. If you look at the Lake Michigan on this map, you'll see a green area around it, and that green area is the Lake Michigan watershed. And what that means is when it rains or snows in that area, that is what drains in the Lake Michigan. And what I want to call your attention to is take a look at Illinois down there at the bottom corner of Lake Michigan, and you'll see that we have very, very little land that's in the Lake Michigan watershed. So, here, as we sit in Gurnee, when we flush our toilets, it goes to the Water Reclamation District, and it goes into the Des Plaines River, the Illinois, the Gulf of Mexico. So, all of the water we take out of Lake Michigan, and really, all of our members take out of Lake Michigan, even Lake Bluff, all of that water's diverted out of Lake Michigan because we're outside of the watershed. So, we're very fortunate that in 1967, the Supreme Court decreed that the state of Illinois could withdraw 3,200 cubic feet a second of water out of Lake Michigan. If it weren't for that Supreme Court decision, we would not get fresh water out of Lake Michigan.
Can I just ask a quick question? Is the Jawa have the furthest extension out, or which city that draws from Lake Michigan? I remember years ago, North Chicago had one of the furthest pipelines out into the lake.
You know, I don't, that's a great question. I don't know the exact answer, but I believe the DuPage Water Commission takes water from Chicago and repumps it out into the far west suburbs. So, I think it would be, you know, a far west suburb. There's people that pump it further than we do, is what I'm saying. But I would like to point out that the city of Joliet, you may have heard in the news, it's big news in the water world, between $1 and $2 billion. They're building a 70-mile pipeline to the city of Chicago, and they are gonna take water from the city all the way out to Joliet. It's called the Grand Prairie Project, and that will be the furthest out of Lake Michigan then.
The pipe extending out into the lake, that will be the furthest?
No, the pipe from, it would be a pipe from the city of Chicago, 70 miles out to Joliet.
I know, but what pipeline?
Into Lake Michigan.
Into the lake itself, who has the furthest?
Chicago.
Chicago does?
Yes. So, when you're down in the city, you can see the crib out there, I believe it's a mile out. So, they pretty much have the furthest, goes out over 5,000 feet.
Curious. Thank you.
Yep. So, the Great Lakes are also unique because they're in kind of a stair step, so as snow melts in Lake Superior's watershed, it flows in the Lake Superior, then down in the lake Huron and Lake Michigan, in the lake area over Niagara Falls, and eventually out to the St. Lawrence. It's this pretty unique thing that when we have the high school kids in, this is something that we like to explain to them. A question I get a lot is about Lake Michigan water levels, and I've been around long enough doing this over the last 30 years, that when the lake's very low, everyone's panicked, saying, you know, "We're using up all the water, this is terrible." And if you wait about 10 to 15 years, you'll hear and read newspaper articles that we need to do something, the lake's so high, it's washing in properties, people can't get to their boats, it's a tragedy. But fortunately, Mother Nature's bigger than us, and right now, Lake Michigan is running right around the average. In this chart, you can see the red line is 2023, and the blue lines, 2022, are very similar to last year. And the pink, the pink dots are the long-term 118-year average. So, you can see right now, we're right over the long-term 118-year average, and the black lines at the top and the bottom are the record highs and record lows. So, we're right, right at average right now. Another question that I've, I've received a lot is, we shouldn't be pulling water out of Lake Michigan because we're gonna drain the lake. And that's not as far-fetched as it might seem. Lake, the Aral Sea in the Kazakhstan area of Russia, of the former USSR, actually was one of the largest lakes in the world, and it's now virtually completely drained. Stalin diverted fresh water that was going into the Aral Sea out of the mountains. He diverted it into the desert to grow cotton very successfully, but diverted so much water that the Aral Sea in a very arid place went dry. So, it is possible for man to, to affect a very large body of water. Ours is monitored by the Army Corps of Engineer, Engineers. We know that we're living within the natural fluctuation of Lake Michigan. The village and all of our members have allocations from the Department of Natural Resources. That's watched very carefully by our neighboring states who periodically and routinely sue Illinois to make sure that we're not taking more than we're supposed to. And just to give you some context of how big this lake is, in one minute, more water evaporates off Lake Michigan than we pump in one day. It's a big lake. So, that's all I had to say about Lake Michigan, my favorite lake. So, about our, is there a question? Okay. About our facilities. So, this is a picture when they were putting out our intake pipe in the 90s, and you can see the pipe itself, it's 54-inch diameter pipe, so I would have to bend over a little bit to stand in it. And that was lowered then into the lake, into the lake bed and covered with riprap and rock. That pipe extended from our raw water pumping station out to an intake. This is the intake sitting on a barge before we sunk it in the lake. These cones are seven feet in diameter, so the water flows into these cones, into the pipe, into our raw water pump station, which is pictured here. So, our raw water pump station is on a bluff overlooking Lake Michigan, very nice area. On my first day, I asked the then-Assistance Executive Director, "Is it possible that my wife and I could camp?" "Yeah." Next to this building, and it was a firm no. But man, what a location, it's beautiful. This building looks pretty nice on the outside, it's pretty austere on the inside, it's cinder blocked. It goes down 110 feet into the earth, it's below the lake, the lake bed, water flows in through the intake, it fills the tank in the basement of this facility called the wet well, and then we just have pumps that lift the water up out of the wet well and pump that water to our water treatment facility, which is pictured here. Our facility's in Lake Bluff, roughly around 41 and 176. It's a very nice place to work, and it's just a wonderful facility. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. We have a distribution system that goes out, it's currently 55 miles of pipe. You can see it's a branched system. So, when the agency was being formed, a question was asked, "Should we loop the system?" To loop the system, what about doubled the price of the pipeline? All the members at the time said, "No, we don't want to spend more money than we already are spending, especially when we all already have wells and we all are currently supplying our citizens with water." So, our members decided to maintain their backup systems and their interconnections with other communities in lieu of spending hundreds of millions to loop the system. So, we have a branch system, and you can see here how it goes out into the county. When it was built, it was the largest public works project in county history and took about two years to complete. It's pretty remarkable. We have a booster pump station in Libertyville, kind of Libertyville, Grayslake, Mundeline area. This is on Peterson and 45, roughly. You may have driven by it and recognized these tanks. I've been on the train before commuting and heard people hypothesize that these are nuclear missile silos, they're not that. They, I've been in them, I can assure you, they each contain 3.3 million gallons of drinking water. And in this building, we have a booster pumps, and we also add a little bit of chlorine there, because chlorine breaks down as it moves through the pipe, so we boost it up a little bit right there. So, just very briefly on our treatment process, this is a diagram, and I invite anyone and everyone to come out to the water plant for a tour. We've toured over 10,000 people from all over the world before the Olympics in Beijing that I'm dating myself. The Ministry of Environment of Beijing with about 30 people came out. Yale University brought them out to our facility with interpreters, because they wanted to see what state-of-the-art water treatment was in preparation for Beijing Olympics. I've had over 300 South Koreans through the plant, Mongolia, just all over the world, Venezuela, they're coming to see a state-of-the-art water treatment facility, and it's something, I don't want to sound braggadocious, but we tour people from all over the world, and how often do we tour Gurnee residents or any of our residents? Not too often, except for their children through scouts and guides and, and things like that. We also do a lot of school outreach. So, anyways, this is our intake, it goes out in the lakes, 3,000 feet, it's at the far left, and the, the depth of the lake there is 26 feet deep. So, the water flows to that raw water pump station I showed you, and then we pump the water to the water treatment plant. And this is where it gets pretty special and why people come to see us. The first thing we do is treat the water with ozone gas. There's very few people, very few utilities in the United States that use ozone as we do. We then go through some conventional treatment, some carbon filters, and then we treat the water with ultraviolet light. Again, that's very rare. We add phosphorus to the water to protect the water from the metals in your homes, plumbing. We add fluoride, that's required by the Illinois Department of Public Health. We add the minimum that we have to add, because I'm in the taking stuff out of water, not putting it in. And then we pump the water out into the system. So, what really makes us unique is, you know, people drink bottled water, they think that it's, you know, so much safer, and I just have to chuckle, partly because I work at the water plant, I see what we're doing, partly because I used to work at a manufacturer who bottled water, and partly because for 18 years, as the lab supervisor, I tested the water. And we add ozone, carbon filtration, and UV disinfection. Check your bottle of water, see if it uses that much treatment. It's a very impressive process. Well, one of the things we're very proud of at the plant is when you're given such a phenomenal facility to operate, you want to make it even better. And what I want to show here, it's a little technical, but I think if you just look at the bars, you'll get the sense I'm trying to convey. So, in Lake Michigan, there's only two compounds that exceed regulations. There's only two compounds, and one is turbidity. Turbidity is the cloudiness in the water, and it's caused by particulate, algae, things of that nature. So, Lake Michigan does exceed turbidity requirements. And the other thing that Lake Michigan does exceed periodically is bacteria levels. And we monitor bacteria, and especially after it rains, we see bacteria in the lake. So, with regards to turbidity, since 1992, when we first went online, our turbidity average for that year was over .1, and I know you have no sense of what .1 is, but .1 is crystal clear water, you need a, you need an instrument to measure that, that low. A human can't detect turbidity until it's about 5 to 20. So, .1's not even detectable with your eye. But what you can see over the years is that we've lowered that turbidity pretty steadily over the years as we've tightened up our, our process. And the way we've done that is, we were the first plant in the United States to achieve a voluntary level of turbidity performance. And that voluntary program was called the Partnership for Safe Drinking Water. The US EPA and the American Water Works Association joined together to form this partnership. We were the first ones in the US to achieve it, and it's really, you can see the green line is the partnership standard, and you can see the red line there is the federal standard. So, not only are we, the partnership, three times lower than the Fed standard, or three times better, we're even better than that. So, it's, it's quite a plant. So, I'd like to shift gears a little bit towards membership expansion. And what that means is...
You have a question, Bill?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Chris, you're right.
Thank you. I just had one question. You add phosphorus to the water to take the metals out of what comes from a house. There's one metal that's in the news lately, does it take that one out?
Yeah, so the reason we add phosphorus to the water is to keep the lead out. Yeah. So, it's not as much of an issue in Gurnee, but in some of our communities, you know, they have houses from the late 80s. Yeah, so it's not as much of an issue in gurney, but in some of our communities, you know, they have houses from the late 1800s. There's definitely lead services. And because those communities have, had, had lead detected in their water, the members elected to add phosphorus at the water treatment plant. So that it would coat the insides of everyone's metal plumbing to keep the copper from your plumbing if you have lead solder or if you have lead pipes. It forms a white coating on the inside of the pipe, and it simply keeps the water from contacting the metal. And when we started doing that in the 90s, I mean, you can just watch the lead levels come right down to below detection. So that's how we're currently addressing lead.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure. Thanks for asking the question, too. I like questions. So our, let me go back. So our membership, what, when I started at the water plant, it was right after we went online. And a couple of communities came to board meetings and said, oh, we'd like to join. And to be very candid and blunt, our board basically told them, no. You had your chance. And they put up, they went through a lot of political turmoil to create this plant, and it's very successful. And they wanted to make sure that they had enough water for all of you. They just spent all this money, they don't want to give the water away. So what happened over time, as you can see in this chart, what this chart shows is the amount of water that we, that our member communities have demanded. Basically, the amount of water we've delivered to them since 1992. And if you look at this chart, you'll see a general trend that it goes up until 2005. And when I started in 1995, every year, we're selling a ton more water. And we're like, when is this going to end? I hope we have a big enough plant. 2005, there was a big drought. And then from 2005 on, the water has gone down, people are using less and less water. Well, if you don't follow the news super closely, you'd find that hard to believe. I thought we're using so much water. It's not true, we're using less water per capita all over the United States. The reason that's the case is because of water conserving devices. So the US EPA passed a law that required low-flow showerheads, low-flow toilets, more water-efficient washing machines and things of that nature. And it's really made an impact all over the country. So now we're selling less and less water. A lot of time has passed, too, two decades. So a few people approached us and said, you know, we, kind of, we're wondering if you guys are interested in selling some water? And this time, we're a little more interested. Because the board recognized we have this plant capable of making so much water, and we're not using the full capacity of it. And the real reason the board wanted to do it is they wanted to reduce and put downward pressure on water rates. The more water we sell, the less we charge, it's really as simple as that. Every year, I figure out how much it's going to cost to run the plant, I divide that by the amount of water we're going to sell, that's how much we charge. It's, it's really that simple. So our board made the decision to allow new members to join and to preserve some extra water for themselves in the future. Because we want to make sure that we have enough water for the existing members. So they allowed new members to join, that would be Lindenhurst, Lake Villa, a couple Lake County systems, Wakanda, and Volo. And you can see in this chart that when Wakanda joined and Volo and those other communities, that's flow as shown in red. And this chart simply shows you that by bringing in those new communities, we again are showing that we're, we're kind of offsetting that decrease in water sales. And this is the really best part about it. The board likes to run the water plant like their own business. So when these new communities joined, well, is that really fair to all the folks that have been paying, that were paying property taxes and that paid for this utility? Maybe not. So they instituted a capital buy-in fees. And basically told these communities, if you want to join, you're going to have to pay capital buy-in fees. Because our residents, when we had a property tax, which we no longer have, when our, as our residents paid the property taxes and paid for our general obligation bonds, you know, they're investing into the system. You can't just come in and take advantage of that, you're going to have to pay your way in. So we have a deal in the bottom corner there, till 2050, we have about $51 million of money coming in, and the board is putting that to our capital assets. Because running a water plant is a capital asset intensive venture, it's all equipment and electricity. That big building that you saw, there's only 12 people in there at a time, that's housing, equipment, and water treatment processes. So this has been tremendous for lowering water rates. Just to touch on our fixed asset replacements, our capital replacements for next year, just to give you a taste of kind of some of the things that we're doing. We are updating our main switchgear, these are 12 and 1/2 thousand volt switchgear. We're doing repairs to our, our stand pipes. We're fixing a, a roof that's also covers a basement area, repairing our ozone generators, doing some sedimentation repairs, fixing a pump, and doing some routine electrical system upgrades. So that's next year's capital plan, basically. We have a plan that goes out 10 years, actually, the plan goes out 65 years, but we only show anyone 10 years, because that's all that's realistic. But we do have every asset we own in the plan scheduled, we know how much it costs when we bought it, and it's scheduled for replacement in the future. So now that we brought in the new members, and we see water sales are starting to go down a little bit again, we're comfortable with the new members. It's working out great, the board dynamics are as good as ever, although everyone's very collegial, and it's just been fantastic. The board directed me to go out and seek additional sales. We have about 4 million gallons a day left to sell. And we also did a study of every community water supply in Lake County. And we listed them from what we'd prefer to what we'd least prefer based on how much revenue they would bring us. So the capital buy-in fees are based on the number of households in the community. So your ideal new customer would be a community that's very mature and has a lot of households. And enter Lake Zurich. Lake Zurich has been very interested in getting our water. We've been working with them for the past few years now, and actually signed a, a good faith resolution with them. And hopefully, within the next year or two, we'll be asking you to pass an ordinance in gurney admitting them as a new member, along with all of our other member communities. They will bring in $21 million in connection fees that will then go to our capital asset program. And the more widgets we make at the plant, it doesn't cost me that much more to make widgets. All I got to pay is a little extra electricity and a little extra chemical, and we can lower the rates for everyone with that. So that's something that the board and Lake Zurich are very excited about. In terms of water quality, what I like to tell people is, you know, don't ask Facebook about the water quality, just give us a call. And I do, I'm on every Facebook neighborhood site I can get into, so I can address questions people have. But we have a fantastic website, we publish all of our results, all of our finances, everything's here. The contracts that you have with us, everything's here, it's very transparent. Including all of the testing that we do on our water, which is the most aggressive water testing program that I can find in the nation. There's a lot of other people that are aggressive, and we're all pretty much maxed out, there's only so many things you can test for. On our website, you can look at all of the current things that are in the news, and click on those to get our position papers and information about. So the one I wanted to cover this evening that is on the website is something that's called forever chemicals. We call them PFAS, perfluoral alcohol substances. These are substances that are found throughout the environment. They're found in precipitation all over the world, on the Tibetan Plateau. The precipitation there has PFAS in it, polar bears in the Arctic, PFAS in their blood. Every single one of us, in every study that's been done on human, humans around the globe, we all have PFAS in us. And these come from production of Teflon, stain resistance, clothing, food packaging, paints and ceilings, pesticides. And they're everywhere in the environment, they're very pervasive. And so naturally, one would expect we'd find them in Lake Michigan. In 2006, before anyone knew about PFAS, except I was, had learned about it in my chemistry classes, we were the first to start testing for it. In Lake Michigan, we found a lab to do it, they were only doing it experimentally. And in fact, when PFAS finally hit the news about a few years ago, the state of Illinois called us and said, hey, I understand you guys have been testing for PFAS, so are there any? We had all the results. So PFAS in Lake Michigan, I can tell you from our experience of 2008 is when the test became not experimental. We have an average detection of around 2.4 parts per trillion for one of the compounds and 2.3 for the other. That's averaged over since 2008. The proposed maximum level by the US EPA is four. So we have around two, proposed maximum level is around four, so we're about half of that, which is good. And we have all that information on the website, people can read about it, links to different sources of information, links to the regulatory language. And I'm also happy to take calls from anyone that wants to talk about it or come into the plant and, and talk about it as well.
Mayor? Mr. O'Brien?
Are the PFAS, are they cumulative? So they're 2.4 right now? Does that mean unless we do something about it, they might keep growing?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So I can tell you since 2006 that the levels are always between like two and two and a half. They have not gone up, but interestingly, we stopped making this in the United States a while ago, and they haven't gone down either. So they're holding steady right now. Hopefully, we'll see them start to decrease, but they certainly haven't gotten worse. Just a few things to brag about your water treatment plant. We just won the award for Lake County's Best Dicing Water, this was a competition held by the Illinois American Water Works Association. And we're pretty proud of that. We went downstate to a state competition and we lost, we took second to Evanston. So they got lucky. I told them they mixed up the samples. We've also won for our distinguished budget award 13 years in a row, Certificate of Achievement for Financial Reporting, 14 years in a row. I talked about the partnership, we're the first in the country. After 21 years, only 18 water plants out of 50,000 have achieved this level. We were the first, and several other things that we're, we're proud of for awards. We're the first in Illinois to use ozone and the first to use ultraviolet disinfection. I mean, it's really a world-class water treatment plant that we're all very proud and thankful that y'all built for us to work at, because it is an absolute treat. And if anyone has any questions, you know, this is your water plant, so we invite people all the time to come down to the water plant. I'll follow you around. If you don't trust me to give you a tour, I'll follow you around, you check it out, look at whatever you want, it's fine, it's, it's an open book, you can't get in the front door unless we let you in. But, you know, we have nothing to hide, it's very transparent, and we're happy to answer any questions you have. Trust me, I've heard every question there is so far today. And, you know, there's no dumb questions or dumb concerns, we're, we're very worried about our water, we're making water for you, that's a big responsibility. I make it for my parents, little babies being born at the hospital right now, senior citizens, immune-compromised people is a huge responsibility, we take it very seriously. And we're happy to, to show you what we do.
About answering a doomsday question in terms of your imagination, I'll ask Brett that two more. But for you, what would your imagination draw in order to, for the water not to come to gurney? What event or events would have to happen for that to occur?
Yeah, I think, I think the most likely event, and we kind of game plan a lot of these, but the most likely event is corrosion is our biggest enemy. So I go to Washington DC and lobby senators and stuff for additional funding to help us get low-interest loans and things like that. And I was asked once, what, what keeps you up at night? And I had a rusty bolt, I carry it around, it's in my office. It's a bolt. And Brett will attest that we'll do a big dig and do a repair, it's to replace bolts and things that are corroding. So my doomsday scenario, or most likely doomsday scenario is our 48-inch pipe ruptures. And that's going to take weeks, if not months, to repair. And so you'd have a service interruption during that time when we rely on your backup systems. And if we have a rupture of that size, you'll see it on cable news, because it's going to be pretty big.
Prefer or not?
Yeah, me too. Well, we, we take actions to try to address that, we have a very good system, we have corrosion protection, we monitor for leaks, we do all the things that Brett does. You know, so we make sure, but that buried infrastructure that's hard to see, sometimes it's 12 feet underground, that is a concern. The natural concern I have is if there was an earthquake, which, you know, we've had a few small ones here that don't seem to upset the pipeline. But if we had some kind of massive earthquake, that would also be a concern. Those are the two.
Any questions? Jesse Thorson?
Thanks for the presentation, very informative. About five, six years ago, Foxconn was going to come to Wisconsin, and there was a lot of articles about the potential impact into the Des Plaines River watershed. And that they'd be, I think, extracting water out of Lake Michigan, but then putting some chemicals back in. So is that still a threat that a business such as that, that, you know, a heavy manufacturer would come into an adjacent state that could impact, that doesn't have, you know, potentially the same regulations as we would want?
I don't know about that specific example. But when you look at the watershed map for the Great Lakes and Lake Michigan, you see that very large portions of states are in the Great Lakes watershed. And definitely, for instance, in Indiana, there's metal refineries. They are allowed to discharge, they have to monitor their discharge in the Lake Michigan. They occasionally exceed that, and they report that. So when those happen, that's concerning to me, fortunately, they're very small volumes. And fortunately, we're upstream from those, because the way the water flows is, it flows from north to south along the shore. And then it flows up along the west shore, east shore of Lake Michigan, so we're not really impacted by Indiana so much. So, I mean, those are concerns, but fortunately, the lake is so large that we get a lot of dilution. And we do monitor for those kind of discharges routinely, and we don't see them changing at all, we don't have any detects. We don't detect any, it's not because we're not looking, we're using the lowest detection method available. And also, when those happen, you know, it's not so bad having your big brother, the city of Chicago down there, their water plant has a boat. And when that happens, they go right to the Indiana, they have no problem going right up to the shores of Indiana and pulling samples. And then we can see kind of how those results are. They love to kind of get into those refineries' faces, especially the ones in Indiana. So, I mean, that's always a concern, it's a big watershed, it's a large lake, it's exposed. But so far, our testing, we just don't detect those compounds.
Okay, thanks. The other one is on carbon, you mentioned early on that your treatment facility has, uses carbon as one of the filters. And possibly because I only hear it in a negative sense in terms of decarbonization. Is this something that would be replaced in the future, or is it still a positive impact?
So when you hear about decarbonization, what they're talking about is removing carbon dioxide gas. And what I'm talking... dioxide gas. And what I'm talking about is granular activated carbon. It's a, it looks like coffee grounds. And this is the same thing that people have in their refrigerator filter. It's the same thing that's in a Brita water pitcher. It's the same thing the US Army uses in gas masks. People use it in their aquariums to clean the water. In the emergency room, this is what they'll pump in your stomach in a poisoning case, because it absorbs poisons. It's a black, it's from coal ultimately, and it's used, it's very good at absorbing substances out of water. So we use granular activated carbon, the same thing that people use in Brita water pitchers in their refrigerator. We use it at the water plant. So it's not really related to decarbonization, like as you're describing.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
My last. Rusty Ross? Oh, sorry.
The only, I'm sorry, the only thing I would ask is also on security and that tampering, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Always kind of frightens, too.
Yeah. So after, so when I started at the water plant, my first day, I worked at Abbott, and I worked in Culligan in research and development. So I worked in a corporate place. And, you know, at Abbott, I walk in and someone's asking me, who are you? I mean, it was intense. And when I was at the water plant, my first day in the lab, I heard a kid laughing and running down the hall. And I looked out of my lab, and there's a mom chasing this like three-year-old down the hall. I'm like, what is going on? Well, I found out the water plant was where we allowed people to come, use the washroom, get a drink of water, and use the open lands adjacent to the water plant. And so it was for the public. After, before 9/11, I don't know if you recall, that there was a bombing in the parking garage at the trade centers. And right after that, we erected a fence around the facilities. And then, of course, after 9/11, then things really ramped up. But our system has all kinds of protections throughout the system, so that, to try to resist that kind of attempt. And it's a very serious thing. When I have high school kids, I tell them, just so you know, like crawling up on a water tower, you just don't want to do that, like grandpa might have done, because that is a federal offense. We get notifications of a person looking through a fence in Highland Park. That goes out throughout the entire state. Watch out for this person. I mean, it's a really serious stuff.
Thank you.
Rusty Ross?
Thank you for your presentation. And I'm not surprised that you got the Best Tasting Water Award, because sometimes you go traveling and you, you taste other water, and you realize how spoiled we are. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, one more, last one. So is there anything proactively you're doing then, or that can be done, not if by you, but by others, to reduce the PFAS?
So in terms of, in the environment, PFAS is out there. So they've banned the manufacture of it. And now we're just going to let time slowly break it down. Unfortunately, it takes a long time. In terms of the water treatment plant, right now, we're installing, we have 12 filters. And right now, we're replacing the carbon in three of those filters. And we're going to be doing an, an analysis to see how well and how long that carbon will remove the PFAS. So we can use that then to inform ourselves. Do we want to replace all the carbon in the plant? Do we want to do that on a routine basis? And, you know, this is kind of where the rubber meets the road. So you have PFAS that are half the allowable level. So they would be considered acceptable to the regulators. And to replace all the carbon in the plant, you know, you're talking probably a little over a million dollars a year. And divide a million dollars a year by how much water we sell you, and that's how much more you'd pay for it. So that'll be something that, after we look at how well the, the carbon removes the PFAS and for how long, that'll be something I'll be bringing to our board, you know, for informational purposes. But that, that would be what we're doing proactively. We've also joined a class action lawsuit against 3M and DuPont. But those have been the things. It's very difficult to remove. It takes a lot of carbon, takes a lot of granular activated carbon. I just was at a presentation, the town of Woodbury, Minnesota, which is the home of 3M, is completely contaminated, all of their wells. And they just settled an $850 million lawsuit with 3M. Most of the town works at 3M, so it's a tricky subject. And they're able to change the carbon every year to keep the levels above the current regulations, which is a lot more than we actually have.
Thanks. Just wanted to mention, too, that Jeannie alternates with me as attending Jawa meetings. And both of us see Dick Welton as a forefather of this. So we appreciate the history and the history that we've shared with Jawa. And Bill, just the demonstration of your care and concern and how much you love what you do is obvious. So that's always exciting to me. I think that when I go out in the community and hear people, how proud they are of what they do, that shines through in you. So I appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
And probably isn't noticed very much. But like I said, someday, I hope it never comes to that. But people appreciate what we have. So thanks for coming out tonight.
Sure, thank you.
All right. Brett, you're up.
Give me one second. They did to the desk stop, but it moved. Show everyone that USB. Know what you're getting? Hold it up. A little fire hydrant. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Brett Fritzler. I'm the utility supervisor with the village of Gurnee. I grew up in Lindenhurst and currently live in Lake Villa. And I've been with the village for 22 years. Going through the process of this presentation, part of it's going to cover the history of it. And a lot of the infrastructure that exists in Gurnee was put in prior to my employment here. So this was pretty educational for myself, as well as hopefully for you. It's kind of split up into three different sections. We'll go over the distribution history in the village, how the current system operates, and then the challenges and our responses to those challenges, and then whatever Q and A we have. And also, if you have any questions, as I'm going, or need clarification, please just stop me, and I'd be happy to answer them. Gurnee was incorporated in 1928 as a village. By 1950, the population was about 1,000 people. A lot of those people were on their own private shallow wells, and they saw quality concerns with sulfur in those shallow wells. In 1954, the village contracted with Backstrom and Woodman to conduct a water system feasibility study to see about bringing a public water system to the village to serve its residents. In 1959, as a result of that study, Water Tower One was built. It was .2 million gallons. And Well One, at 300 gallons a minute, was constructed, which is next to the current fire station one. And it served approximately 400 residents, primarily in the Old Grand, sorry, Old Grand and Ridgemont. What was Ridgemont? Those major areas right there. In 1960, Gurnee annexed the industrial park towards the northeast off of the Delaney Road area. And they reached an agreement with the city of Waukegan to provide water to that area. So it was two separate systems at that point. In Well One, or sorry, in 1972, the population had increased about sixfold. And they were experiencing water shortages throughout the day. So they increased the pump at Well One from 300 gallons a minute to 500 gallons a minute. And then in 1973, the village entered into another agreement with the water, with Waukegan to supplement the well water supply. In 1974, in response to the Heather Ridge subdivision being put in, Well Two was drilled at 900 gallons a minute. And then in 1975, the village identified the need for a reliable, long-term solution for a water source. At that time, they considered the city of Waukegan and the Lake County Public Water District, which currently operates and serves, I believe, Zion and Winter Harbor and the Illinois Beach State Park. So for the immediate needs here, they ended up going and, or remaining with the city of Waukegan. In 1977, the West Side Pump Station was put online. That's the one that's located off of Route 21, next to the employee entrance to Great America. And that was constructed to bring Waukegan water down into Heather Ridge. That was done to increase demand in response to Great America opening, and also to blend the well water to soften it up a little bit. Tower Two was also constructed in Heather Ridge for half a million gallons, and that increased capacity during peak times. And this just kind of indicates where they were bringing water from the industrial park area up here, down through the West Side Pump Station, and pushing it down Route 21 into the Heather Ridge. In 1980, Pembroke subdivision was planned. And again, they conducted a study looking for a suitable water supply. Two options were considered, drilling a third well next to what would be the location for Tower Three off of Dilly's Road, or bringing Waukegan water from the industrial park area, once again, to the Pembroke area. They chose option two. So in 1987, Tower Three was constructed, which is a half million gallon tower off of Dilly's Road. Tower Four was constructed off of Northwestern Avenue, which is a 2 million gallon tower. The North Side Pump Station was constructed at the corner of Fuller, Fuller Road and Boulder's Drive. And approximately 6,600 feet of water main was installed to connect the two. So they're taking water, again, from the industrial park, running at about 6,600 feet up Route 41, crossing over and into the Boulder subdivision, where North Side Pump Station is, and then pushing it out into the Pembroke subdivision and into- And as Bill noted, in 1992, well, even before that, which I wasn't sure about the exact date, but they were still looking for a reliable source that they could call their own. The Gurnee was. So they founded CLC Jawa. We began taking water from them in 1992. We constructed the Cemetery Road Pump Station, which is capable of about 7.2 million gallons a day, and a 3 million gallon ground reservoir on site. We also retained our interconnect with Waukegan at Sunset and Northwestern for emergency operations. Can give water to them, and they can provide water to us. And then fast forward to 2021. Well, for some time prior to that, the village conducted studies regarding pressure out on the west side of town. As more development went in, we had concerns about lower water pressures far out west. So with those studies in mind and the opportunity to develop a secondary feed from CLC Jawa, we installed a secondary delivery structure on Almond Road, next to the Bittersweet Golf Course. We installed Tower Five, which is a 2 million gallon tank on Knolls Road, and created Pressure Zone Five as a result of it. So this is the resulting Pressure Zone Five. CLC Jawa, water comes up Almond Road to the delivery structure here, and pushes water to Tower Five on Knolls Road. And basically, Zone Five encompasses just about everything west of Hunt Club Road, south of Grand, and north of Washington, with a few exceptions. That's a brief history of the distribution system in the village. Any questions so far? All right. So now we'll go on to the current system operation. Since 2006, our daily average flow has kind of done a steady, steady drop. It's been trending downwards since 2006 in fiscal year. This is set up by fiscal year. So in fiscal year 2011, you'll see a large spike here. That was a result of a large leak that was occurring out on, off of Route 45 in a wetland area. Very difficult to track down because it was a wetland. After that, it's a pretty steady decline, with a couple of exceptions here. In COVID, we saw a very sharp drop as a result of everyone sheltering in place and all the restrictions that there were. And then after COVID restrictions were lifted, you heard the term maybe revenge travel as a result of that. There seemed to be a much larger demand than normal as a result of COVID restrictions being lifted. And then the current fiscal year, and then last year, dropped down to much normal averages.
Where, where does the Great Wolf and the water park, did they have impact then on our water usages?
I would imagine they have. I know that they have, but-
I mean, you don't, you don't really show.
I don't, I don't have the day that they came on, on here, or identified on here. And I think a lot of that has to do with, as Bill mentioned, the water conservation effort. So as maybe we get more businesses like Great Wolf that come online, there's an increase in water conservation efforts due to low-flow fixtures and just overall conscientiousness about conserving water that works to offset increased demand from a business like that. Our current operation, distribution system is set up into five different pressure zones. Zone Five is out west here, Zone Three, Zone Two, Zone One, and Zone Four. And I'll go into that in a little bit, a second here. So this is Zone Five out here. We have the secondary intake coming in from CLC Jawa at Almond Road Pump Station, off of Almond Road, that pushes water into the Knolls Road Tower. And it cycles the tower between 30 and 45 feet. And there's a flow control valve inside the station, sorry, inside the station that allows us to automatically adjust the flow up or down. So when the tower needs to fill, the flow increases. And when the tower is full, the flow decreases automatically based on set points in this SCADA system. It's approximately a 28-hour cycle from starting to fill to having to fill again. So it'll fill- So it'll fill, stop filling, and then drain, and about twenty-eight hours later, it starts filling again. There were also two PRVs set up in this pressure zone, Foxworth and Almond PRV, and those are designed to allow water to flow out of Pressure Zone Five into Pressure Zone Three. Uh, it keeps the water at those dead ends flowing and fresh, and it also helps to supplement, uh, water flow into Pressure Zone Three. In Pressure Zone Three, we've got the Cemetery Road Pump Station has a twenty-four inch intake from CLC Jawa and a three million gallon ground reservoir. Uh, this, uh, this pump station is also set up with a flow control valve, where again, it'll fill the, uh, system by opening the flow control valve and then closing it, uh, to reduce flow once things are full. So the ground reservoir is set to open at sixteen feet and closes at twenty-three and a half feet. It also has a system fill valve that fills Towers Two and Three. But the set point is set low enough where we still have to turn over water in the reservoir. So it's not only just for emergencies, but we have to keep it fresh, so it cycles through. So, uh, when Tower Three gets down to twenty-three feet, the high-service pump will kick on, pull water out of the reservoir, push it out, and will fill Tower Two and Tower Three. The altitude valve in Tower Two will shut off, and Tower Three will finish filling. When that's finished filling, the high-service pump will kick off, and then flow will kind of drop back down at that pump station. From there, uh, water passes through Zone Three and into the North Side Pump Station where there's a pressure-reducing valve. When Tower Four gets down to approximately twenty-five feet, the valve in here opens up and allows water from Zone Three to pass into, uh, Zone Four, or sorry, Zone One, and it fills the tower. So the tower starts filling at twenty-five feet and shuts off again at, uh, thirty-seven feet. At North Side Pump Station, we also boost chlorine at that location because of the distance that it travels from where we receive it, going through our system, and then out to the east side of town. It helps keep residuals up and the water quality, uh, higher in the east side of town there. From Zone Three, water can also pass through the West Side Pump Station, again through a control valve into Zone Two. PRV Six sees water from Zone Three going into Zone Two as well. PRVs Seven and Eight allow water from Zone Three to go into Zone Four. PRV Five allows water from Zone Four to go into Zone Two. And then PRVs One, Two, Three, and Nine allow water from Zone One to go into Zone Two as well. So we have a lot of different directions all feeding in to Zone Two, which is our lowest-pressure zone, uh, because of its, uh, this, you know, uh, proximity to the river, its lower elevation, and also the age of the infrastructure in there. Uh, we tend to keep the pressures a little bit lower in that area, um, just to keep the water main intact. It also presents a bit of a problem running Well One because everything is feeding into Zone One, and when we turn on Well One, there is no buffer for the water to go into. Once we took the tower down, it eliminated that buffer when the pump kicked on. Uh, so we're currently working on solutions to allow that to run without causing more harm than doing good. Up here in the far northeast side of town, we've got PRV Four, and that's a PRV that can help to control the flow of water coming in from Waukegan or going out to Waukegan in emergency situations. So if Waukegan experiences icing on their intake, we can open that, uh, open that valve, send water to them, they can slow their draw from Lake Michigan until the icing situation resolves itself. Alternatively, they're one of our major backup sources for the event of a CLC Jawa shutdown. We can open the interconnect and take about one point seven million a day from them. We could probably take more, but doing so might stress their system, and if they, uh, have a water main break on that feed, well, then we have no feed at all from them. So we try to keep it within reason, just to preserve the integrity of that pipe. As mentioned, we also have Well One as an emergency backup that's capable of point seven million gallons a day, if we can safely put it in the system. And then Well Two down at Heather Ridge, which is capable of one point three million gallons a day. Uh, that comes out to about three point seven million gallons a day reserve, uh, pumping capacity, which is about our average daily flow. A little bit less flow in the winter, increased flow in the summer, and then we have eight million gallons in storage between the reservoir and the four towers. Any questions on any of that? Yes?
Oh, one quick question. So I was aware of the exchange point with Waukegan, so for me, that's, you know, huge, you know, backup disaster, very cool. But have you considered any discussion about adding a second exchange point with Waukegan, such as maybe on the south side of town?
Uh, to my knowledge, we have not, no. But it's definitely something as we look at, uh, putting Well One online and look at a resiliency or backup plan that we could look at doing for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good so far, Brett. Okay, I'm going.
And then I've got, uh, some of the challenges that are facing the Gurnee Water Distribution System, and then our responses to them, primarily lead, PFAS, PFOA, which Bill spoke on, our system operation, and then infrastructure funding. So everyone's heard of Flint back in twenty fourteen, uh, huge water crisis. They, uh, changed their water supply from Detroit, uh, which was a reliable water supply. They didn't like the, the cost of it, so they started pulling water from the Flint River. Uh, the water in the Flint River was much more corrosive, and they didn't add the chemical that they needed, the phosphorus, to prohibit corrosion. So all the corrosion resistance that had built up, up to protect the water supply from the lead pipes came off, and the result was disastrous. So as a result of that, there's a lot of legislation that came down. Uh, the ones that impact us the most are House Bill thirty-seven, thirty-nine. Uh, it required a lead service line inventory, which isn't just lead service lines. They want you to inventory all of your lead service lines and then determine which ones are lead or which ones aren't. And it also required full lead service line replacement and banned partial replacements. So the initial inventory was due in April of this last, of this year, and it was submitted. In addition to GIS records that we had, we poured through, uh, any other kind of records that we could get our hands on that would indicate service line material. It included hookup drawings, permits, and old work orders from work that we had done out in the field that indicated what they service line material might have been. Uh, as a result of that, we identified all but thirty-eight service lines, the material for those. So we have thirty-eight unknown service line materials as of right now. So far, zero lead have been found, which is excellent. It puts us in a really good position. And then we have a, a goal of finding out what those thirty-eight are by April twenty-four, when the final inventory is due. Uh, we're going to accomplish that through pothole and B-boxes where we can, uh, use our vacuum excavator, get down and see what the service line material is on either side of it, and then in-home checks if necessary. Uh, and then, uh, our GIS coordinator, he put together this app which indicates the different service line materials, so you can turn on different layers, turn them off. Uh, green and green is copper and copper, I believe. Uh, yellow and yellow is, I believe, ductile iron. And then some of the other colors are PVC, and then these gray ones in here, these are the unknowns. So again, we'll, we'll figure those out by potholing or doing in-home inspections of the service line coming in. Are there any questions on lead? Okay. Uh, PFAS, PFOA, forever chemicals. Uh, Bill touched on a lot of, uh, the treatment aspect of it, and what I'll talk about is our compliance, our regulation compliance aspect of it. Uh, the unregulated contaminant monitoring rule, Regulation Number Five, covers sampling for PFAS and PFOA. And we've contracted with Pace Labs out of McHenry to, uh, analyze our samples, and we're scheduled to sample quarterly beginning in April, July, and October of twenty twenty-four, and also January of twenty twenty-five. Um, given what CLC Jawa has seen, uh, with their PFAS sampling, I don't, I don't anticipate any kind of issues with our sampling. Uh, but performing these samples, uh, will keep us in compliance with the regulations. Uh, system operation, um, we have five pressure zones, as I indicated, uh, four water towers, four pump stations, eleven, eleven pressure-reducing or control valves. Um, and with that comes a lot of complexity. Uh, as the history of the distribution system kind of, uh, progressed, as the village grew, uh, the necessary changes were made to the water distribution system to adapt, and the new infrastructure was made to work with the existing, uh, which is, uh, kind of a short-term solution. And what we're finding now is that now that we have all these moving pieces, they're all made to work with the one before it, but there wasn't a, uh, a large look at the system as a whole, how it would operate as a whole. So one of the things we're doing is, uh, entering into an agreement or a contract with Backstrom and Woodman to perform a water distribution and SCADA optimization project. This is going to look at a number of things with our water distribution system. Uh, it's going to create a hydraulic water model, which will allow us to run certain, uh, different scenarios with operating the system in a, uh, virtual environment rather than making changes out into the system and dealing with the consequences. Uh, it's going to seek opportunities for operational improvements, ideally, and reducing the number of water pressure zones, uh, trying to find pumping efficiencies and simplifying emergency operations protocol so that in the event of a shutdown from CLC Jawa, you are not trying to, uh, it is just easier to move the water that we have from maybe way out west to the east side or vice versa, instead of having five different pressure zones that you're trying to push water to and changing fifty different set points to accomplish it, uh, having a protocol in place that will simplify that process. Another thing is looking at is, uh, making a proactive schedule for infrastructure replacement and replacing the, uh, about twenty-year-old, uh, SCADA system that we have right now. So, uh, the previous slide with all the set points and all the digital readouts of the water system, that was a screenshot of our SCADA system. It is closing in on twenty years old, and as you can imagine, with any software that's twenty years old, it, it's losing some of its, uh, its glamour, and, uh, it's also becoming unsupported in a few years, so we're looking to get that replaced.
Is there alarm systems? So like, when pipes break and water is spewing, is, is there an alarm system that sets off for you to be aware of where that is to react to it, or?
It depends on the size of the break. So we have, i- in the SCADA system, there are, I believe, a hundred and fifty different alarm set points in there, and they have to do with usually like low-water alarms in the water towers. Uh, they can be low-pressure alarms. Um, so if the break is sizable enough, I'll get an alarm that maybe a tower has a low water level. Uh, for example, we had a, a car hit a fire hydrant down at Heather Ridge a number of years ago, and it didn't break, the hydrant didn't break properly, so it was literally a geyser shooting out of the hydrant, and I received a low-water alarm for the water tower in Heather Ridge. Uh, that kind of alerted me that something was going on down there, and I was able to find out that that was a result of it, so. But specifically for small ones, not in the current SCADA system. Uh, ideally, we would have, uh, moving forward, we would put additional monitoring in place, uh, including, you know, pressure or leak detection monitoring, real-time, uh, leak detection monitoring that would indicate, uh, something much quicker.
Yeah, 'cause I remember that, there was that break just east, one block east of forty-one at Grand Avenue. That took a while before.
Right, yeah, so a lot of times what we can see with a large break, uh, such as that fire hydrant or, uh, on Route twenty-one by South Road there, we had one that was blowing into a state storm sewer under the road. Uh, and I could see that there was something going on in our SCADA system that we were, had increased pumping, increased demand, couldn't keep water in the towers. Water was going somewhere, but in that sort of situation where it's not showing itself, uh, it's difficult to find until you put people on the ground a- and actually start looking at river crossings, creek crossings, uh, storm sewers, things like that.
So the new software would help to be able to?
Uh, the new software could have additional alarming options, and then also we're looking at, uh, leak detection monitoring. So leak detection, for a long time, has been you hire a company, they come in once a year and they listen on your fire hydrants, and they try to find some leaks, and they usually do. Uh, but it's, it's a snapshot for, for one day or two days out of the course of the year. Uh, a lot of the systems now have permanent leak detection mounted to hydrants, mounted to pipes, mounted to valves that use, uh, cellular communication and send information up to the cloud and can give you real-time information about leaks. So it listens on a pipe, if the normal, if it sees a normal, you know, decibel level of X amount, a variance outside of that will throw an alarm, and it will pinpoint the location based on where your locators are located in the system.
Yeah, 'cause didn't you just say that the new, like, if I, my toilet was running or something, can't you now tell that?
Correct, yes.
That's the meter, so.
Correct, so, so.
We need to do that on a bigger scale.
Correct, right, right, and that, that's what the, the leak detection, uh, options that we're currently looking at will be able to do, is that you'll place them out in the system, and you'll get a snapshot, or you, not a snapshot, but you'll see your real-time, um, alerts and information about what your system is doing, and it'll throw alerts out to you for things that are outside the normal. So instead of having to hunt for a leak in, you know, the wetland area or, uh, in the Forest Reserve District where the water main goes into, under the Displanes River, you can have monitoring on that twenty-four seven that's always looking for that.
Is that in your budgetary, uh, plans? Oops.
Go ahead and just ask, how much? Hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars?
The leak detection specifically i- is in the hundreds of thousands, not in the millions.
Okay, well, maybe not right away. I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
It, it depends on, on how many units you want to deploy and how they're managed, but.
Listen, just watching guys going out in the dead of winter fixing pipes just kills me to watch that, so.
Yeah, well, we.
You'll have my. You'll have my
Honestly, I, it's, you know, main breaks are going to happen regardless. And the more proactive that we can be about finding those leaks and getting them under control. Not only does it save us money because we don't have to pay for it from Jawa, but also it helps us with our ID and our allocation where they're constantly scrutinizing how much water you're taking in versus how much you're accounting for. And when water goes in, you know, down the drain because of water main break, it's unaccounted for water. And they don't like to see that. So it will help us out with our revenue and that we don't have to pay for that water and also with the ID and R with our allocation. And then lastly, infrastructure funding, right? So we have aging pump stations and PRVs, everything except for the newest tower and, you know, Tower Number Five and the Almond Road Pump Station West. The newest pump station and PRVs are 30 years old at this point. And we, you know, we do maintain them. However, you can only rehabilitate pumps and things like that for so long. In addition to the infrastructure that's above ground, such as those pumps, we have 180 miles of water main underground, 142 miles of sanitary sewer main, 2.8 miles of sanitary forest main, and approximately 5,300 or so meters, residential meters that are 30 years, or sorry, 20 years or older. As meters age, they lose accuracy and it isn't in favor of the municipality. They become, they become, they under-register. They have moving parts and when the meter gets old, they, parts wear down and it under-registers consumption. So those meters are what drives our revenue. And when they don't perform, it's a hit to the revenue. So taking a look at water mains specifically, we saw a large boom in the late 90s and 2000s. And as a result of it, and as a result of the expected, anticipated life expectancy of different materials of water mains, the cost to replace those pipes that were put in is going to be a large hit, starting in 2025 through 2024, 2084. So these are all the PVC and ductile iron mains that were put in in the late 90s, put in in the early 2000s with anticipated, you know, life expectancy of approximately 75 years. So that's an astronomical amount of money to try to budget for replacing those mains in such a short amount of spine time. So ideally, we would like to smooth that out, smooth out the replacement schedule, smooth out the cost where we could replace the more brittle cast iron mains earlier. And it would help avoid overloading village staff with projects down the road where if we were to attempt to tackle replacement projects for this many miles of main, it would be almost impossible. So we're looking to hopefully smooth that out and replace them at a more gradual scale. One of the ways we can accomplish that is through consistent rate adjustments to fund the capital projects to replace those water mains. Since the service life on these is approximate, you know, we'll keep assessing our water main conditions. Not every cast iron pipe is going to fail at 60 years. Some may go 100, some may meet the end of the service life at 40 years. So as we, as we move forward, we're continually assessing which areas are exhibiting the most problems and looking at replacing those. But again, with, with that many, with that much water main going in in such a short amount of time, there's going to be a, a large amount that's going to come due around the same time. And then, you know, lastly, you know, to accomplish replacing these water mains, you know, as we work through the budget process, we're going to come up with more information for capital plans and rate plans to accomplish the water main replacement projects that are going to be coming due. Thank. That was it?
Right.
Any questions?
So Brett, thank you for, I just appreciate your experience. I oftentimes after I'm done with a presentation of something that affects the village, I go, oh, no. And between you and Bill, I feel like, you know what, we're heading in the right direction and I don't have the fears that I had coming in. So I appreciate what you both have done. And I think the village should say, yeah, thank you too, when they turn on their faucet in the morning that you guys have thought about it. So thanks, thanks for all the work you do.
Absolutely. I mean, I think Bill can probably attest that my goal is to keep Gurnee out of the news, keep Gurnee water out of the news. Because usually if you hear about a water system, it's not, not for something good.
I agree, I agree. Thanks, thanks again.
Sure thing. And if anybody would ever want a tour of any facilities or has any questions, please let me know. I'm more than happy to.
Any questions from anybody else? Anything else? No, more than Joe Jordan?
Some, well.
Motion by trustee Mamas, second by trustee Ross, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.